I'm, I'm ready, Janice.
Well, I can't have this machine. You're up.
Hi. Good morning, y'all. Welcome to the Rankin County Board of Supervisors' May 15th meeting. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, and I'd like to ask Craig Slay if he would pray for us.
Father, we are standing before you now. Thank you for your presence here with us, Lord, acknowledging that we need your help today, Lord, to make good decisions on behalf of the county. Father, we stand ready to receive the wisdom and the discernment that you promised to give to us if we ask, and so, Father, we ask for that today. And thank you, Lord, that you have been so good to our county. The blessings that we can see all around us, Lord, are very evident. Father, we thank you and give you credit for those. I pray, Father, that our men and women who are out there protecting us even now, Lord, that you will preserve and protect them, bring them home to their families and...
Let me add one. All right. Next on our agenda is public comment. We have a proclamation declaring May 2019. Well, Craig, will you take that?
Yes, sir. I'll be glad to. I'll be glad to, Mr. President. As we did last year, we're going to declare, or you're being asked to declare and already have declared, May 2019 as, I'm gonna try to pronounce this, Neurofibromatosis Awareness Month. This is a, neurofibromatosis is a condition that affects 2 million people around the world. One in every 3,000 births is diagnosed with this condition, and it's still relatively unknown to the public. It affects all populations equally, regardless of race, ethnicity, and gender, and this condition causes tumors to grow nerves throughout the body and also can affect development of the brain, cardiovascular system, bones, and skin, and this disorder can lead to blindness, deafness, bone aftermalities, disfigurement, learning disabilities, disabling, pain, and cancer. What much remains to be done in raising public awareness about NHEF to help promote early diagnosis, proper management and treatment, prevention and complications, support and research. And so, it's the pleasure of the board to designate May 2019 as Neurofibromatosis Month. That's been signed by Mr. James and attested by our county clerk. We'll make sure that the local contacts for this foundation are provided with the original adoptive statement.
Mr. President, I was the one who put that on the agenda, and Andy Stogner, who works for the city of Brandon, his daughter suffers from that illness, and so, we're just doing a favor there to kind of bring that to the community's contention, so I appreciate that.
Andy's in my district.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Craig. Let's move on to the next item. Brandon Cobb, would you come up and give us an update on where we're at?
Good morning. We just started our mosquito season. We've been in about a month. Of course, this early with the weather and the temperatures and stuff, we aren't really seeing a whole bunch of mosquitoes at the moment. Of course, the rain has been pouring down for the last month, every week.
It's been dry outside for a little while.
Now, they're there, they're just not as bad as they're gonna get. We're just, we're in the beginning edge. So, we've started our trapping, we've started our spraying, larval surveillance, we've got a good, we've hit the ground running. Things are looking pretty good. After this rain, with this pretty weather coming in, I look to see the trap numbers increasing, and of course, that means us out more every single night. Of course, we've been running several trucks a night for the last several weeks. Always, at the beginning of the season, do a complete spray of the county, kind of get a preemptive strike, knock 'em down. I'd rather keep 'em down all summer than fight to get 'em down all summer. So, that's what we're doing. So far, so good. Ain't got much to say this early in the season, so just wanted to touch base with y'all and let y'all know we are out there working.
Greg, I have a question.
Yes.
You said that you could track where every one of your drivers is in. Is that information available to the public?
Uh, yes and no. We provide a monthly report to y'all. We can also do maps. It takes a day or two after the truck is run for our CIS people, or GIS, whichever that is, to produce a map. I can't have a map sent a couple days after we spray to y'all.
But it's managed, though.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I always get people calls saying they never come by, so...
I get those calls every single day, and a lot of times, it'll be the day after we sprayed right past their house that night. Our trucks are a lot quieter than the ones in the past, and we go from about 7:30 in the evening, about dusk, up through midnight, and it's different. The way we do our zones is we may start on this side, this time we sprayed this zone, we may start on this side the next time, so we may pass your house at 10:30 this week, and the next time we come by, it may be 7:30 we come past your house. So, a lot of times, they just don't see it. But we do, the way the GPS on those sprayers works, it tracks the truck and sends in digital data to the computer network, and then they make maps out of it. We don't have a real-time way of showing that. It's real-time tracking, but not a way of showing it.
Yeah. I'll just stick to calling and asking you when you've been by there.
Okay, that's fine.
Usually, I think, Jay, when I call them, they send a printout. I think you send something I can actually show somebody.
Yes.
Or I can, I read it to them, because I have the same thing. Oh, no, they don't ever come by here, and then I tell them the time is that night. Oh, well, I'm asleep.
Yes. I get that a lot. Actually, you know, people call all the time, well, y'all, I didn't hear a truck come by or didn't see a truck. Well, we probably came through that area about 10 o'clock at night, yeah? Oh, well, I was asleep.
Yeah.
But we do, the maps are available at any time within a day or two after we spray any area, and then at the end of the month, you know, we send y'all that report with every one of the maps, and the people can come through y'all, or they can call us, and we can email them a copy of the map of their area and what night we went through there.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. Y'all have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you.
Mr. Carl, you're next.
Uh-oh, Craig getting up too?
Oh, that's a little concerned there. Good morning. I want to come before you and bring you some additional information, maybe some clarification on some things. What I'm handing you out...
Two of them, or one?
Yes, sir. Is, I guess, they found some additional debris at the courthouse.
Oh, man.
Yeah. And what that, what that first page is, it's the report from the independent testing agency, the civil engineers have been out there. Where they found it there, if you'll look on the second page, is a little purple area in the drive, and then in the third page, what's colored in pink is all the, including the drive, that has been or is to be removed. It's a good deal smaller than what, what was in the original deal, but I need authorization. A contractor has given me a price of not to exceed $20,000. Now, if you will remember, we had a change order for not to exceed $257,000 for all the debris before. They're not gonna use all that. They, actually, it's gonna be, they're gonna have about $40,000 or $50,000 left over. So, based on the engineers and the geotech engineers' reports, the recommendation is to remove, it's the same stuff, debris in the drive, and we would still have monies left over from the original change order. I would, I would suggest incorporating that into the original change order.
I think they gotta dig.
Could you show me where the original, on here, where the original debris was?
The original, I'm sorry, Jay, is in it. From here over.
From here over is the original?
Where, where, I need, I want to know too.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If you turn to the next page, in the pink, it's really from, from, from right there over, it's the original.
Oh, and what are we looking at now?
Just the drive portion of it, which is in the purple.
Okay.
And what, it has to go, it has to go beyond, extend beyond about five feet of the drive, and then there's a water line in there, too, that they're, they're having to deal with. But, you know, when that came up, I told them, oh, yeah, this is gonna be fun when I come back to the board for additional debris. The only good news is we still have, we're not, there's still gonna be some monies left over from that change order, unless they find some more, which we've just about run out of dirt to dig up. So, but it is from everybody's recommendation, experts and consultants, we need to, we need to remove it, just like we did the original debris. It's the same kind of stuff.
Same depth?
Seven feet. It's not as deep as the first one. That's what they're thinking, is about seven feet what they found. So, and the contractor said, he doesn't, you know, he thinks it's gonna be less than 20,000, but he was trying to give me a reasonable figure not to exceed the $20,000. That's where we're at on that particular item, and I guess the only urgency is we've got, finally got a week of good weather, so I'm trying to get them moving by, before the rain sets back in.
What kind of time is it gonna take to do it?
Uh, about, he said about 10 days, thanks, depending on the weather, is what he's looking at, and it could be quicker this week. There are some other things going on, the city...
All he can make is $10,000 a day, in 20 days, he's gonna break.
No, 10 days.
Yeah, it's $20,000.
Don't make $10,000 a day, though.
It's $1,000.
Yeah. Oh, I thought you said 10,000.
He'll go broke at $1,000 a day. Anyway, go ahead.
I don't see, I mean, really, that's, I like the footage, that sounds like a long time for that little, what it looks like to me, a little bit, but anyway, another 10 days.
I forget how many cubic yards it is here, or if I know that. I know I asked him to provide that for me. I don't have it, I don't have it with me. But that's, it's an average of seven foot, and that's, you know, if they can get most of it done this week, it may not take 10 days. What happened before was as soon as they started getting it open, you know, rains come.
Yeah.
And, and there's a couple of things, but this particular soil, it just, once it gets wet and gets saturated, it just takes a long time to dry out, and they can't support equipment on it, it's a problem. But the other thing that's not really affecting that change order is the city, they ran into a water pipe that the city has, that the city is relocating, but it's taking time for the city to relocate. They're gonna have to abandon it, run it down Tamblin', and run it over to North Street, and that's really beyond their control, although they're gonna take the pipe out for the city, but they can't take it out until the city reruns it, so that's affecting some of their work, too. But they're, my guys have been out there at 6:30 the last few weeks, like yesterday, and they've been working at 6:30 in the morning, and, you know, that's just where they're at on that. But that, that is a change order. Our recommendation is to go ahead and get it done, but it's up to y'all, it's the decision. I know that Seth has been out there. Are you aware of it, Tim, about that debris?
Yes, everything.
Answer any questions, y'all, Mike?
Not, not increase, not an increase, so...
Well, Carl's got a big section down underneath, in the Craig stuff, do we want to go ahead and discuss that while we have him in front of us?
I would encourage you guys, if you have any questions. This was mentioned, I want to say it was mentioned on May the 6th, is that right, Carl?
Yes.
Yeah, so this, basically, we, we were going to address it on May the 6th, but you guys had some questions about it, so we moved it to today, but Carl gave you a little bit of a presentation on what you find as item P under my section. If you have questions now for Carl, now that you can see it laid out in front of you as to what's being requested. At the time, on May 6th, when Carl came, it was just information being given to you. It was not written down like this, so look at it. If you've got any questions, Carl's here.
I, you know, I mean, it gets, gets back to me, and I think that's the big elephant on this project, is the contract date. We're giving them, they've been, we're being asked to award them additional 50 days due to excessive rain greater than a tenth of an inch, as according to per contract. That's really to be the biggest thing there. I don't see anything else in that little group of things that we need to approve that jump out at me and say, no, I don't want to do it. I'm not saying I don't want to do the 50 days either. I mean, if they're, if they're entitled, you know, based on your interpretation of the contract and the specifications, then I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I don't like it, but we are getting closer. I saw sheet rock going up, brick going up, you know, so...
Yeah, and I know, and I'll, I'll try and explain a little this, because I notice what it appears to be. They typically, on all construction jobs, just as an average and normal, a contractor will work, their hours are 7 to 3:30, that's their typical time. So, sometimes, when people go by there around 5 o'clock or so, they don't see anybody working, and that doesn't mean they can't work there, but, but that's what they're doing. And then contractually, when they bid a project, they're bidding their normal work hours. They are, in this particular case, all Britain, when it's not raining, is working Saturdays. Of course, the last three Saturdays, they couldn't, they couldn't work and do because it's just, they couldn't, but, but they are working overtime at their own expense. That's, that's just them, but I say it's not their own expense, but the sooner they can get through this project, the more profit they will make. It's costing them money, even with approved rain delays, to extend this project, even if the board approves the 50 days, which we're recommending, that's costing them overhead. So, they're, they're, they have an incentive to get through as soon as they can. This particular project is somewhat unusual with the amount of slope in the site. You know, we have three different retaining walls, and the soils. Now, when they bid this project, all the contractors, they understood the soil type, so that's not really an issue, but what they, nobody could predict was the amount of rain. And with this particular soil, you need more than just a day or two to dry out, once it gets saturated, and it has been saturated the last, almost since the day they started. And then there's been some other issues, like when the city water line broke, I mean, they were pouring foundations, and it flooded, it took about a week to get that fixed, and then it took another week for it to dry out, just so they could pour them up and pour their It's been, it's been, you know, kind of depressing, but no more so than to them, too. And we've, we've had several strong conversations with them about the time, and they understand that, but it's just, it is what it is, and, you know, we represent the board, trying to get this thing done the best way. It's a very complex project. The only thing that I would caution is I don't want to push them so hard that we start losing quality control, and we've seen that on projects. We've also seen projects where the contractors were not really doing what they needed to do to get the projects finished. Now, I'll be honest with you, in this case, up to today, I don't know what's gonna happen in the next few months, but we're being very pleased with the amount of quality of construction and effort being made. It's just a very complex job, and I know that doesn't, doesn't really solve the problem, but we've, we've talked to them, they understand, and I think if you go out there, you can't park, because they've parked on three or four streets with workers, so, but I'll, I'll answer anything else if you have any other questions.
Down at the bottom, it says they're seeking additional 84 days.
That's including the change orders, 30 days for the audiovisual to put that in.
I think that's total of all the total days.
Yeah, total, oh, right, 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 right. That's the rain days and the audiovisual and...
That's from the beginning.
No, it's from the last.
It's from the last one you gave.
Last one you approved. So, I've got a, let me see this, I don't know if this is...
We gave them, we gave them extra days and they excavated.
Right.
Yeah, it was up until the day. I voted against.
You want me to hand them out for you?
I thought we voted for it, it was split. I thought it was voted for either to do it.
This is, this is what you've already seen. This is the timeline that I sent out to you guys from Carl, so you've already seen this, but it's, this will be helpful to you to...
That, that's how, that's how we got to these days, and again, contractually, they're entitled, they're entitled to the rain days. Now, on the change orders, you know, the board can disapprove that, but unfortunately, the contractor has a right to not, not accept the change order. So, but that can be, you know, we negotiate, like on the first debris removal, they ask for more days than we wind up giving them, and they agreed to that. So, there, there is a little room, but I, it's just, the more I've seen the site work and what they do, the other problem is when that dirt gets wet on the outside, they can't get their equipment on it, so they can't get the outside finished, or to a point where they can do all the interior work. Now, they are moving forward with sheet rock and that kind of things, even though they still got glass to put on the building, so they, they've kind of jumped the guns on that, but, but they've had trouble. That's why it's taken so long, even though a lot of that's dirt work, they can't really, it's not a good idea to do some of that interior work until they get some of that enclosed. So, that's, it all compounds itself, is all I'm saying, and...
Well, so, they're behind, I mean, the completion date was way back, and we've moved, well, aren't they still, aren't they still running behind?
They're still about running a month behind, right? Even with the extended days, they're still running about a month behind, and, and they're trying to make that up, at least that's my understanding from what we've seen, that's what, I do agree, they're trying to do that, but there's, again, this building's gonna be here 50 to 60 days. I just don't want to sacrifice the quality to get this thing finished in a few extra weeks, but therefore pushing them, and they understand, they understand your position as a board, and again, like I said, they have an incentive from a financial standpoint, it's costing them money. The longer they're out there, the more it's costing them in overhead and profit.
Right. So, your sheet says, if you grant the request, this is before you, the approved completion date is August 4. The projected substantial completion date is September 3. So, there's 30 days in there that technically, if they finish after this change order and there are no other change order requests for extension, they'll be paying LDs on 30 days, roughly.
And that, that, you know, that could get extended. I don't, I don't, September 3rd is, is from their schedule, I don't, you know, I think they might can get through in September, I don't think it's gonna be the first part of September, but they are, they can't, they're moving, they're able to move faster now, they've got all their interior crews working on the inside. Once they get sheet rock up, then the next thing will be painting, but again, they need environmental control to do some of that stuff. Now, we, we specify mold-resistant Jip board for the very reason to allow them to get in there earlier, but again, you just, you don't want to cause issues, getting in, you know, doing too much interior stuff until they've got climate control and the building closed. But I think they're to a point now, they can move forward very quickly. They got all the ductwork in place, conduit run.
I have a question. On the audiovisual package, 33 days?
I thought that was long, too, but I talked to the audiovisual consultant that we used to design that, he thought it was gonna be like, more like 45 days. It's just pull, it's, they've got to provide the equipment, which they probably already is in the process of purchasing, but the bulk of it is pulling wiring and doing that, and it's, it's a big building, it's a...
But they're pulling wiring for the lights and the receptacles.
But it just...
And this will probably be a sub that's doing this.
It is a sub doing it.
So, you're not taking your electricians over here where they can't be doing what they were doing?
No, but what happens, Steve, is that then, then they've got to work around the ceiling people, the grill, they got to get it in, in between, they'll put up the, probably the ceiling grid, or at least a good portion of it. There's stuff above the ceiling, so they have to get all that done, so that delays some of the ceiling work. It's, again, it's not, it seems simple, they have to get it out of the way with the electricians, because it's all working in the same area. It, and it may not take that long, to be honest, but that's, like I said, I, I thought that sounded long, and I checked with my consultant, he thought that was actually faster than what he's seen normally on projects, so...
So, if we wouldn't have broke it out, they would have to do it within their standard contract time?
Well, we saved, we saved some money trying to break it out, and we didn't save what I was told we were gonna save, we saved a little.
So, tell me, what is, what is the 30 days for security?
That was adding all the access control and the cameras, a quarter million dollars of that that's going in.
I just don't understand why they can't work concurrent with the other, I mean, it's a big building, a lot of...
It's almost like whenever these folks show up to work, they're leaving the job site and not doing anything.
Everybody else is...
Everybody else is taking over.
No, it's, it's, it's a complicated, it's, you've got to organize it with all this workforce. You get so many people in there, they can't work, they can't work around each other, and then, then everybody starts to point fingers on, well, we caused this problem. It is, I understand what y'all are saying, and I don't disagree, but it's not as simple as it, as it would sound. It's like, they've got to coordinate all this, it's well like an orchestra, they've got to conduct all of this, and then they've got contracts with their subcontractors, and so, they're basing that off of what their subcontractors are telling them, and we can go back and, and, you know, see if we can reduce that some, ask them.
Have you, you visited with the audio folks, whoever, so the request, although with a liking, you have flushed it out, that it's legitimate for...
In my opinion, it is, Bob, yeah, at least based on the information I'm getting, and we're, you know, we, we've got these so-called experts in each of these fields that we allow them their, their expertise, and that's what they've told us, because I have the same person impression, it shouldn't take that long to pull, pull some conduit and things. But they've got to set, they've got, and then they've got to get the, once they get the ceiling in, then they have to put the speakers in the ceiling, so it's, it's like dominoes, you can't do one thing until you can get all this other in, and then you can't put the ceiling in until you get, again, the environment, because the ceiling tile will get moisture in it, and then they'll start to do it. So, it's, it's A, B, and C, and they might can get it done faster, but they're trying to, you know, protect themselves, too. They don't want to say one thing and then it take longer. I don't know if that answers, Steve, I, I have the same questions.
So, you're thinking the end of September, we'll be moved in?
At the earliest.
At the earliest. I don't think it's gonna be, it's not, I don't think it's gonna be any sooner. Now, they, like I said, their schedule right now shows September 3rd, but I just, I, that's, that's a lot to do, but yes, if the earliest, the end of September. Now, on the misdemeanor, it's a different story. Their, their schedule is showing this month, and I think it's gonna be first part of next month. The only thing on the misdemeanors is, is you may remember, we added the prison bids to the, to the project. It won't take them but a few days to install those, but it's take, it's up to six weeks before they can get them on site, once it was ordered, which was a week ago, two weeks ago, something like that. So, they may be through with the building, waiting on the bids to get in.
Maybe we should put the sheriff in charge of the courthouse project.
Well, that's, that, sheriff, that may be. He's got, he's got some incentives I don't have.
Make a bucks in trustee. Hey, Carl, getting back to the original, is this all gonna be in the drive?
Right, yes, right now, unless they uncover something when they're digging all that out. That's, they did two test pits, Jay, and that's what the test pit showed, and they did actually, and one of them showed it wasn't even as much as, as that, but the other one showed it was deeper, and that's how they came up with the seven-feet average. So, that's going up, and so, the further you go up the hill, the less it should be an issue, because, again, it would be down deeper below that, and if it's down deeper and there's enough coverage and there's nothing organic, it shouldn't be a problem. It's a steep, it's, that drive is a steep cut, you're coming from Tamaln on down to North Street.
Yeah, I don't really see where we have a, a fight on the days. I mean, either we give it to them or they quit work.
The good news is, we are seeing progress. I'm seeing sheet rock, I'm seeing bricks, I mean, we are moving slowly, but we are moving. I don't see, if we start posturing and nobody wins, you know, you're just gonna stay on top of them, Carl, and push them as hard as you can without affecting quality. I know, and I wish Mr. Cross was going to be here for this conversation, I have a sneaking suspicion, but we'll have to revisit this all in its entirety when he gets here, but maybe not. A quick question, while I'm thinking about, while we've got bond counseling, everybody here on that standpoint, the driveway, the paving, I wish, where's Harrison?
He's in some training.
Oh, okay. He and I were chatting about North Street and Tamblin' Street, far as what the county might be willing to do, or gonna try to do after it's all said and done, we're gonna try to coordinate that, maybe with Ed Camp, who I think has won the bids with the respective projects, and overlaying and stuff, all that, can all that come together at the same time? I mean, I think...
Yeah, I, I think so. I'm, and I, Tim may remember, I'm not exactly sure, this, this contractor is, of course, they documented the shape of North Street when it was in that, and anything that they tore up, I think they, they were to repair, but mostly, they're not, they're widening a little bit, aren't they?
Aren't they widening and the curve on that or something?
I can't remember exactly what work, I, I need to check and see what part of any of the street work this contractor would be responsible for, but I can check on... be responsible for, but I can check on that. It's not much.
Yeah. Mike didn't think it was much either.
No, it's not, it's not much, but it may be that they're, they're having to put in a curb and that may need to be put in before they do the pay, it wouldn't need to be done before they put in any paving that Ed Camp would do. And I just need to verify that, but it's not, it's not a whole lot.
And I'll ask this question too, since we haven't been broached with it, since we're close on our contingency. Would it be wise maybe to consider a small contingency within our bond fund deal to account for any over construction cost on this project?
If bond council will allow us to do that, it's part of new construction of the county building, just so that it's, it's near completion. That's something, Steve. So what Bob is saying is, would it be possible for us to utilize some portion of the bond proceeds that are ultimately derived from this bond issue and assign those to the contingency portion of our contract with the existing contractor on the Chancery Court building that is coming to, to completion? Could we use the bond proceeds for backfill the contingency balance that is appearing to run out pretty quickly here? It's new construction.
Sure.
I, I will say at this point, the only major item that we still know on the courthouse is we've got a hundred fifty thousand dollars for landscaping. That's out for pricing right now. And that doesn't mean something else can't come up. I do know there will be a few small credits in the five to ten thousand dollar range, but we're anticipating not exceeding that landscaping allowance. So there's nothing else that I'm aware of of any significance. I mean, that doesn't mean that something can't happen, but that's, that's, we've tried to anticipate all of that.
It's, it's difficult whenever the occupants are close by.
Yes.
And they see what's going, I mean, you say they're there from seven to three-thirty and there's, there's so many that are running on top. And then I hear, and I'm not going to give names, Steve, there wasn't but four people there. I mean, that, you...
My guys are there once a week at different times and there's always more than four people. I don't know where they're getting their information or what time they're there.
Maybe more than four, but I, sometimes I think it needs, it does look like there's a lot of activity.
I think that just boys frustration is what they're doing and exaggerating what they see.
Probably.
Well, and I will...
And that's why I hadn't made...
Yeah, I will say this, because we're doing a lot of Rankin County schoolwork. There's a, and you can go back and Google it. Right now, in the metro area, there's a shortage of labor and these subcontractors are running from project to project. And I'll give you an example. We're doing just about trying to finish up Brandon Baptist and Churchville and we've got the same mason on that that's on the misdemeanor. Well, the contractor on the misdemeanor apparently has more pull because he's got his masons over there, but they were way behind on Brandon Baptist. And it's just, I mean, again, that's not an excuse, it's not a justification, it's just a fact. And, and that's happening with all these school projects because they were pushing them. Obviously, they've got deadlines due to school and it's just either who pays more or the squeaky wheel. So that is a realist, I'm not, that, that can be a realistic on certain days.
Yeah.
I'm not discounting that.
You know, I don't, I don't want to be over there myself writing down how many people there at what time of day and that kind of stuff. And I would want to negotiate the days a little bit, but I, I, I think that Daniel, he said he would be here about this time. I would like for him to be, if we could...
Ten fifteen when he said he'd be here.
Ten fifteen? Oh.
Well, I'll, I'll stick around. I mean, I'll stick around.
Let's do that. And then we'll, we'll brief him and...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate the call. Mr. President, I'm making a motion to approve May second minutes and May thirteenth minute, May sixth and May thirteenth minutes.
All right, Bob made a motion, Jared second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve his agenda.
The move.
All right. Bob makes a motion, Jared seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I say we say no to Ms. Fortenberry and she'll just sit down.
Just give me a minute. Last time I came before you asking about possibility of enlarging our Flowwood office. Craig has this contract before you. We will enlarge it by twelve hundred square feet and they will give us a five-year contract, thirty-six hundred dollars and either, well, Johnny was supposed to be here. I took him over there, let him look at the construction, what will have to be done and he was going to give you the update on that, so.
Let me, let me...
You need me to call? No.
Just for clarification, this is existing building and office and at this time the people that was, and we're growing, that, that office, I understand, is, is busy, busy on Lakeland. The occupants that were in the next office space left and we have an opportunity, we have an opportunity to just pretty much move a wall and be able to enlarge instead of looking for another office.
Exactly.
And they're charging the same square footage that we're already paying that is from, I mean, when I say per square foot, is that not right?
It's, it's a little bit more because they have not, our other one is, the contract is due to be up in a year or so and they would have gone up anyway. And so they're, they're saying they will combine the two.
Okay, under the same?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd say we pay the same amount for the lower price.
You're telling me.
If I under, if I understand it right, Judy, we're going to, we have, you may have just said it, Steve, and I'm, I'm having hearing problems today, but we've got sixteen hundred square feet, we're going to add twelve hundred square feet for a total of twenty-eight hundred square feet. We're paying, we're going, at the end of the day, we'll pay a new rent rate of thirty-six thousand a month.
I know, thirty-six hundred.
Fine, I'm sorry.
Get that wrong.
Thirty-six hundred a month. If I'm doing my math, I'd have to do it by calculator.
One twenty-nine per square foot.
What is one twenty-nine? I'm doing, I get an annual rent of forty-two-two divided by the square footage, twenty-eight hundred square feet, that's fifteen dollars a square foot, rent, per square foot.
Annual.
Annual.
This is per month.
Yep.
Market, market doesn't recognize it that way, but I mean, I don't, you know, I never, I've never gone and done an appraisal based on a per month square foot. It's always an annual rental rate at fifteen dollars a square foot. We're paying utilities, that's all we're paying, right? At the lease, we're paying our own utilities.
They pay for the garbage.
Taxes, I mean, the insurance, those type taxes in the building, insurance on the bills. The only thing we want to check for is our utility expense and whatever janitorial that we, we're all responsible on janitorial, I assume, so, and, and rent.
And the people, the other people won't be out until the end of June and so they're not even going to start the contract until we are finished and ready to start.
Isn't that awfully sweet of them?
I thought so.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, that's in the market, no doubt. And it fronts the highway, so I mean, you know, I just little, you know, but...
When he called me in by Judy, he said we were going to pay the same amount of money that we were paying, so that's why I was...
Per square foot.
Per square foot, yeah.
It's, it's a slightly elevated per square foot cost over what we're paying for the existing sixteen hundred, but that was, that's a lease that was entered into, Ms. Judy helped me, four years ago.
Four years ago.
Yeah.
Three, three years ago. When it, because it's got one more year on it, is that right?
I think so.
I think what we're looking at is if we do this, we lock it down and we're not looking at an increase in a year from that.
This is fixed.
This will be fixed for...
It's five years.
It's fixed for five years.
And, and that may be cheaper than us saying, let's stay with the same cost, we revisit it.
There's no escalation.
Is that how it's done every five years?
That was how the other one is.
That's the offer that, that the landlord made was five years.
Of course, state doesn't do it though. State, by law, state law, they can't. They go about one year lease at a time because they have to fund it every year. In theory, we could use the same excuse, but then we open itself up to renegotiation.
Correct.
I think we know what we're going to be paying for five years. If we, I'm sure he would say, yeah, I'll do that for a year. And then when we got, we're moved in and everybody's settled and we come back in this time next year, he says, you know, we talked about going up and...
If you're going to get, if you're going to get cheaper, you're going to have to get off the highway, back into a subdivision, some, a, a, a business subdivision somewhere and then you get into a, a find, find me now kind of scenario, any phone calls, you'll get, Jay will get lit up, Daniel will get lit up, you know, to find it, you know.
I mean, I almost think it'd be better if it was a longer lease.
Yeah.
While we spend the money on it.
Oh.
I wouldn't, I'm not for that, I don't think for that, one year, because like I said, I'd want to come back and say, I know that, but I'm saying I would.
Yeah.
Five though, in five.
What's the discussion about? I thought we was all on board.
We, I mean, we were, we were looking at the funding. We're, we got to approve it. I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All right, motion by myself, second by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
He owes us one.
Well, I, I really think that this is better than him coming back next year.
Oh, I do too.
Thank you, Ms. Judy. So Heather, you got something you want to add?
Yeah, one more thing.
Yeah, but it's per square foot.
Request approval to appoint Jamie Farrell as receiving clerk as May Fairley will be retiring soon.
Make a motion to add it?
It's on there. It's on there.
How are you? Make a motion to approve, I'm sorry. Uh, make a motion to approve.
All right, motion by Bob, second by Jay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, you better not leave, Ms. Fortenberry, we may do something later that may impact your office.
All right, John Sullivan's next.
I can hand him Mr. Sullivan's for him.
Make a motion to approve number A and number B.
She said we're ready to go this time, but you just running right over it.
We were going to hear her voice, you just overrode her.
That's fine, she still got a voice, she wants to get involved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Bob, second by Jay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Wendy, anyway.
You're welcome.
First item under my section, apparently y'all have now scared Bob from making his standard motion on lumping stuff together, so let me go ahead and do that.
Man, you slipped out on me, man.
Yeah. May the thirtieth, nine o'clock for items A through G. If I can get a motion to set those for public hearing.
So be it.
All right, we have a motion by Bob to set A through G, second by Jay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yep. For the record, those are all nuisance considerations that will be heard on May the thirtieth, nine o'clock. Item H is a public hearing on the Vernon McFarland dimensional variance request. This is a District Two property. Vernon McFarland is seeking a dimensional variance of twelve feet from the required thirty-foot minimum space between separate detached buildings on the same lot at sixteen eighty-one Highway four seventy-one. This is a three-point-two acre parcel, Zone C two. There's an existing home on the property which will be used as a part of a daycare facility, a site plan and architectural review for construction of a twenty-nine, twenty-five square foot building to be used as, as the daycare was approved on August the thirtieth of eighteen, contingent upon brick on the front and sides of the building and approval of the grading and drainage plan. There were several changes that had to be made to the grading and drainage plan which necessitated rearranging the location of the new building on the property. The revised plan shows the buildings are side by side and they are less than thirty feet apart. That's the District Two parcel. This time we will open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here today to speak in opposition to the Vernon McFarland dimensional variance request. Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter unless you have questions of the applicant. We'll close that public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Bob, second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item I is a public hearing on the William DeVore Jr. conditional use permit, three-thirty Butler Road. This is District Three property. William DeVore Jr. is seeking a conditional use permit to convert an existing workshop into a home for his parents. Property's located at three-thirty Butler Road. It's Lot thirteen Cotton Row subdivision. It's a four-point-nine-five acre parcel zoned RE one. His parents are moving from Missouri due to health issues. He plans to extend the length of the existing shop by twenty-three, twenty-three feet to make the home one thousand five hundred and ninety square feet. The existing shop has a metal exterior and he is proposing a metal exterior for the addition as well. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. I'll ask, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the William DeVore Jr. conditional use permit? Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. This time it'll be appropriate for the board to take action.
Renee, any comments from the public?
Well, he had one call, but she found out what it was, she went home.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Bob, second by Jared. Any other discussion?
Yes. Do you not want to put any conditions on it at all? So you're fine, so after the parents move on, they just rent it out, have a second dwelling?
I think you already put that in there, didn't you?
He indicated he wasn't going to.
He's here, he's here if you need to talk to him.
I mean, he can sell it, he can move, put the hands, I just don't think it's a good idea to add a second apartment to a house for a future, you know, somebody to come potential rent.
Well, we probably shouldn't have let that cat, kept that cat in the gate a while back. I mean, we're going to start, is that going to be the portion of the board or any, or any mother-in-law plans are coming down the road?
In the past, Bob, where, where it's not physically attached to the original dwelling, we've, we've put conditions that once the intended use for this second dwelling is approved, once the intended use, if it's aging parents or it's a child that may, a special needs child, something like that, once that use ends, the permit to occupy that second dwelling ends. We've done that in the past.
He's here, he's here if you need to talk to him.
Mr. Florrie, you have a problem with any of those? You have any problem with that?
No, we not plan, it's too close to our house, I would not be renting it out to anybody.
All right, it's not so much you, it's just future, when you sell it, that, that goes with it, those conditional uses go with it, so whoever buys it from you, you know, if they decide they want to start renting it, we could shut that aspect down at that time. Not so much concern with you, but just the future down the road if you get out of that property.
It's the same driveway.
He's saying if some, one day you wanted to sell it, that would be a...
Sell the whole property.
Yeah. So you want to sell the whole place.
Unless we terminate the use at the sale of the property.
Sir.
Unless you could terminate the conditional use if he transfers it, and that new owner has to come back before the board if he wants to use it as a secondary.
Yeah, it would be difficult for us to police that. I can envision, instead of just an outright sale, they just do an owner finance and, you know, so I don't.
The only way it's gonna get triggered is a neighbor complaint.
That's correct.
And then we would come up and figure out, okay, you've lost that use, but whatever.
That's correct.
Mr. Bishop always has the corner on this market, so I let him stipulate the conditions.
I got a corner on that market.
You stipulate the conditions, let's move on.
I was just suggesting that not, not allow it to be rented out, period.
Okay.
I don't think, he made that clear, he wasn't gonna rent it.
I doubt, Ms. Renee. Anything else I wanna do?
That, that okay?
While, while we're, while we're talking, just before we vote, Mr. Gaines, if you don't mind, we raised this at the time that we considered it in our planning commission, which is that this property is burdened with restrictive covenants of the subdivision. And so we wanted to make it clear on the record at the planning commission, and we did, and, and I'm doing again today just for clarity, that while the county does not enforce the private restrictive covenants with respective properties, it is noted that the plan to take this building to 1,590 square feet does not comply with the restrictive covenants that are on file for the subdivision. The minimum square footage required is 1,600 feet. And I said at the planning commission, they need to find 10 more square feet so they don't run into an issue with a neighbor that gets bent and makes this a problem. So I just wanted to state that again for the record. 1,590 does not comply with covenants. And it needs, it, somebody needs to take notice of that, and I don't want this blowing back on the county from a neighbor out there in the subdivision coming to us saying, why did y'all let them do this when you knew on the front end that it violated the covenants? So I am saying for the record, we don't enforce restrictive covenants. We know that it deviates, and we are advising this applicant, find 10 feet, don't make this an issue. Okay, so that's all I wanted to say for the record. Mr. Marr has got an amended motion, Mr. Gaines, that adds the condition that there'll be no rental of this second dwelling. And with that condition, I think it's prepared now for a second and a vote.
I am.
I've already made, we already did.
Well, we're doing it unamended with the no rental. So, all right, Bob makes a motion, Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Item J, Mr. President, is a public hearing for the M&amp;F Construction LLC Conditional Use Permit at Highway 471. This is District Two property. M&amp;F Construction LLC is seeking a conditional use permit to mine four acres of a 62-acre parcel that's located on Highway 471. The property is zoned RE1. Mining of the property will lessen the elevation changes and allow the applicant to sell suitable fill material for construction projects in the area. They estimate that the mine will be in operation for two to three years. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and they have applied to DEQ for a four-acre exempt mine permit. This is a District Two parcel. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here in opposition to the M&amp;F Construction LLC Conditional Use Permit application. Anyone here in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here in opposition on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. I'll ask if Renee, do you have any conditions for this one, Renee? Oh. Did you?
Hold one moment.
All right, so the conditions as proposed by your county staff are hours of operation Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00. No Sunday hauling. They will need to work with the county road manager concerning all ingress and egress areas at the site of the pit. They've gotta protect the county road where they come in and out. It's usually an area of damage. They, they are required to keep a water truck on site during all hauling operations. They are required to keep the road that accesses this site free and clear of all debris on a daily basis. And the conditional use permit will expire when the MDOT permit, which is, this is for Highway 49, when the MDOT permit expires.
Forty-three.
Oh, forty-three, is it forty-three? I'm sorry.
It's forty-three.
All right. Correct. But when the, when the permit with respect to the forty-three project expires, the conditional use will expire.
Has old 471 been given back to the county?
It's, it's state aid. Where's Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's back on us now?
Yeah, we're part of it. I mean, part of it is state aid and some of it isn't it? Isn't that right?
Old 471 is all of us.
Well.
From, really from 25 North, which was first old.
Okay, that's right, yeah, I understand.
Unfortunately.
So, my understanding is that there's been some discussion from, with respect to the applicant, wanting to know if it's possible for the permit to be extended beyond the MDOT forty-three work. And I, my suggestion would be that we simply revisit the issue at that point. We will, obviously, we'll be in a position to consider an extension.
Right.
It'll just need to be filed with us and made available for this board to consider whether or not an extension is appropriate.
I would like, I would like that because it's Daniel's district and he's not here, and then if there is, if that comes up, then he.
Well, you never know what's gonna change when you're not there.
Yeah. All right, do we have a motion?
So move.
All right, got a motion by Bob, second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item K is a public hearing on the Whitney Morehead, Brian May, Ron Humphrey rezoning request. This is on property that's on Highway 25. This is District Four. Ron Humphrey, his daughter Whitney Morehead, and his stepson Brian May are seeking to rezone 40.30 acres of a 123-acre parcel that is located off of Highway 25. The property is currently zoned A2, and they are seeking a zoning change to RE1. This property has been divided into four tracts. Mr. Humphrey will own two of the tracts, three and four. Each of them plans to build a home on the lot. The property will be accessed by an easement from Highway 25, and restrictive covenants will be attached to the property stating that the property may not be further subdivided. So this is our standard, get it in a position so that a subdivision, as is triggered under our, our development ordinance, can be developed in this area because we don't allow subdivisions in A2. And so that's what this is about. So that public hearing is now open. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Ron Humphrey, Whitney Morehead, Brian May rezoning requests? Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? If you will, please, state your name and address for the record. Come forward.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mr. McGlynn.
Good morning.
My name is Willie McGlynn, 514 Galro, Atlanta, Miss 39094. I'm here because of, I just gotten this and I haven't had time to talk to all the people who was in town. My concern is that I see you have this for McGlynn family. That's thirty, that's 40.30 acres. And that's about fourteen and a quarter. Now, I received this map. This is the location, I guess. See, I haven't had time to go through and check all of this. Now, I'd like to explain to me where the roads, this is for apartment building.
No.
I'd like to know where.
This is a single-family dwelling.
No, it's, no, sir, they're, they're large lots.
Big, big one.
Ten-acre lot, ten, well, I think a couple of ten to twelve, and then one twenty. I looked at this after we talked back there. It's a family, and I think there's four of them. They all want to live on their home, on family land, and they're gonna have big acreage lots, and they're gonna build homes.
That's on McGlynn property, right? That's what I'm here to find out because.
Uh, not on yours. Renee, you may have to help him look at that map and show us. It's, yeah, it's not, no, it.
Well, it says here, Exhibit of McGlynn property. Stated in the one half of the southeast one quarter, Section 13 T8R4E, and this south, southwest one quarter of the southeast one quarter, the Section 18, and the north one half, one half of the northwest one quarter, or the northwest one of Section 19, T18N. And, and they have a map here. I don't know where this map came, but that's what I received in the letter. And according to the map, that'll be the McGlyns, that would be McGlyns property. Go with this, go with this that marked in red on 25. 'Cause see, 25 split our property.
And it also splits the Deaton property.
Right, I understand that.
Do you know, look at this and see if we. The property legal description that he read, is that, was that sent to him because his is within a hundred and something feet of the proposed? Look, the legal descrip, the legal description he read, where'd that, that, we didn't send that?
Well, me, me, that's why I'm here. Because I got the letter. I don't know anything about it, and I just wanna find out.
No, I don't blame you.
Exactly what it is.
You don't want somebody to.
Someone, right, I need someone to explain that to me. On the map, I ain't writing, or, you know, whatever, so that I can understand it.
Yeah, I don't blame him.
Bad deal, wouldn't it? I believe I'd be.
Let, let me surmise as to what I think is happening.
Thank you.
More than likely, when Joe Deaton purchased the property, he purchased a large tract of property, several hundred acres.
Right.
I guess. So what he's intending to do here with respect to this family property that's now before you is he's wanting to sell the, this property to these people who are asking for permission to break it up. He's wanting to sell the 40 acres.
Who is Joe?
Joe Deaton. He's an attorney from Jackson, Lazy D Farms II.
He lives there.
Who did he, in the family, in our family that he get in touch with, wanna sell, sell our property?
I don't know that.
Well, he's representing to us that it's his property now.
Pardon me?
He's representing to us that it's his property, that he had bought it a few years ago.
Few years ago?
A few, I said.
On, on 25?
Yeah.
Not, not right in here, as we know about.
Do we want, do we wanna look at this?
I think we do.
Well, generally speaking, when somebody comes to us and says, I want you, I want you to rezone my property, and they pay us money associated with being to do so, we don't ask a lot of questions about it. Now, do you really own it or not? Because at that point, I don't know why they spending money to rezone property they don't own. So my, my suggestion would be this. Let's, let's continue this particular hearing.
Looking it up.
Let's invite Mr. McGlynn to get together with Mr. Deaton and with the applicants, and make sure that everybody understands, is anyone here on behalf of the applicant today? And therein lies one of the issues, I think, if we had somebody here.
Problem they made.
Yes, so I would suggest to you, given the fact that the McGlyns have showed up and have expressed some concerns, that we don't really need to act on this, especially with the applicant's not here to help us with this. So I would suggest to you that we continue this matter, and that we continue it to a point. I'll, I'll defer to Renee. I'm gonna suggest. Yeah, I, Renee, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let them sort it out and get everything squared.
We're not getting in this one.
Yeah. So I'm gonna suggest that, that we delay the, the action on this matter. Renee, help me with a.
If I got easement, not easement.
Make a date certain out there in the future that we can revisit this. If we have to start all over.
So that's the question, do we have to readvertise, or is it just continued to?
Yeah, at this point, I'm almost of the opinion that I want it to readvertise.
All right, so the next date would be June 3rd, RE1.
Hey, what we're gonna do, guys, let's, we're gonna give us plenty of time here. So we're going to reset this, and it'll be before you again on June the 17th. And we're gonna make.
That's a first for me.
Restart the entire process. That's correct.
Somebody else own the land.
So nothing's gonna happen today.
Oh, okay. So that'll give me time then.
It'll give you time to get it all spread out, make sure you know what's happening.
Now, do, am I gonna get in?
You'll get another notice.
Right, notice and.
I can tell you, June 17th, nine o'clock, we gonna meet back here, talk about it.
Okay, all right.
You might write that down. Yeah.
Can we share Deaton's contact, so that he can contact?
Renee's gonna do that.
Okay.
She gonna give me some, okay.
She's gonna give you a telephone number.
Okay, once you do it, then she'll just come.
Hey, Craig, do we need, do we need a motion or anything on this?
No, sir.
Okay.
The record is gonna reflect that you took no action.
Okay.
The record can also reflect that the applicant will be required to restart the rezoning process.
He probably needs to be here on the 17th if he wants any.
I suspect that they will be here on June 17th.
I, I have an idea of what has happened, but it's only an idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. President, item, if we're prepared to move forward, item L is a public hearing.
Yep, thank you.
Item L is a public hearing on the Derrick Weeks Conditional Use Permit, 202 Bridges Road. This is District Four property. Derrick Weeks is seeking a conditional use permit to construct a 3,200-square-foot metal building house at 202 Bridges Road. This is a 26.60-acre parcel zoned RE1. He originally planned to have a three-foot run of brick along the bottom of the house, but the plan has changed now so that the exterior is, the exterior will be all metal. The county road maintenance of Bridges Road actually ends before this property.
I was gonna tell him about the day.
It's not visible from the public road. It's, it's, it's way off the beaten path. So at this time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Derrick Weeks Conditional Use Permit, 202 Bridges Road. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I make motion, we approve it.
Second.
All right, motion by myself, second by Bob. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item M is the resolution that declares the intent of the board supervisors.
Just like an offer suggestion, since Mr. Gaines, if Daniel's not, whoever that fellow is, not here, let's move on to a different section of the agenda and work through some of those things for.
I hate to tell you, I think the only other one we can get to without him is gonna be item O, which is the action to authorize our, our board president to execute a revised, revised memorandum of understanding between Rankin County and Keep the Res Beautiful. This revised memorandum of understanding will be for the purpose of increasing the mileage reimbursement rate that is stated in the MOU that will allow the person that is selected conduct the work, to conduct the work required by, by the MOU from 15 cents per mile reimbursement to 30 cents per mile reimbursement. This increase will result in no increase of cost to Rankin County as all amounts paid pursuant to the MOU by Rankin County are reimbursed to Rankin County by Keep the Res Beautiful under the federal grant program funds that, that made this MOU available. When you first initially approved the MOU, it had a mileage reimbursement rate for the person selected at 15 cents a mile. After conversations with people who can do the work, they believed that that mileage reimbursement rate was insufficient.
I would say so.
So, let me give you the benefit of.
To approve.
Well, that's going, that's from a grant.
Yes, sir. So Keep the Res is awarded a federal grant to provide for assistance to the county to monitor, primarily, Jared, to monitor stormwater management programs associated with residential construction.
Right.
All right, we have a motion by Jay.
Second.
Second by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, we've got three other items under my section, but we.
I, let's talk about the, the extended days my calls here because if there's three of us that don't have any problem with granting this thing, we're just waiting on Mr. Cross. I probably will agree, and I don't like it, and I, but I'm not gonna get a posturing, you know, with it. And I think if you start negotiating, you probably could get it down, Steve, if you wanted to, on a couple of days. Whatever, you know, you know, from, I don't want to slow it up. I don't want to get to a, by we slowing up anymore we already are.
My guess.
I don't either, but, I mean, I would go to 20 instead of the third, I think it's 30 or 33. I think they can work together in that building, some. There may be a day or two that they can't, but, uh.
You wanna do it, make a motion, I'll point.
They're asking for about 33 extra days, 30, what is it? And see, those. Huh? Oh, well, yeah. Well, that's, that's not what's, the whole 800 is not before us. All right, I, I make a motion that we go with it, but not with the full requested days and, and give them 20 days.
So your, your motion's gonna be pulling back from 50 to 30?
No.
No, no, we had one to third, well, you're right, there were two, there were really two requests for extensions. One on the drive and one on the installation of the audio, isn't that right, Carl? Their total are 53 or 50, what was that total, Bob?
Okay, I see it now, yeah, okay.
Uh, I would, I was really mainly thinking about the audio stuff. I would, I'd like. So what I'm asking is, is really about 10 days off of the fif, the total, 53, which would, and I know that, just being nitpicky, but.
Carl, what you trying to do is compromise a bit, give or take.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're talking about number two, take it from 33 to 23?
Or the total, take 10 days off of the 50 something.
Must be the same.
Isn't that two different, is that two different ones? That's two different ones, is that right, Carl? I mean, they, they go concurrent or what?
Yeah, take it off the audio.
Yeah, they, they do. I can, I can reduce it. I can go back to them and say that the board's only approved this many. And I, if, if, if that's what you're talking about, I don't think they're, I think they'll go forward with that, in my opinion. I could be wrong.
I said go to use just the audio, so that way they can work with that sub directly as opposed to the.
Yeah, no.
I second Mr. Gaines' motion, reduce. I second Mr. Gaines' motion, reducing the audio from 33 down to 23 days of that.
Alright, I've had, I made the motion, Bob seconded, any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And that's for the whole, and that's all of P that we just voted on, right? Wanda, Jessica, that was all of P, right? Huh? That makes sure we're all, that's for the entire section of Carl.
Have you still not addressed the, uh, the?
The digging out.
The brief in the.
That could be an addition.
Right, that wasn't part of, that wasn't part of P, that's a whole different one.
Oh, that's a different one.
You got the audio. Oh, you just hit the audio.
Hold on, hold on just a second. So, so that it's clear on the record what we're doing here, we're only discussing item P on the agenda. That's it, we're only discussing item P.
Okay.
Okay, so what has happened is that, as presented on the agenda item, you've got multiple requests that are set forward, there's six different requests that are set forward, you see that? And so, what you are doing is you're authorizing P, item I. You're authorizing P, item II, with the exception that the days added will be 23, not 33. You're authorizing P3, P4, P5, and P6.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Does everybody understand that's what the motion is?
Yep.
I believe, I'm looking at Carl, I believe that with your action, if that's the motion, and it's adopted, that the change order will seek to add 74 days.
That, that's what I'm looking at, uh.
Is everybody clear?
Let's look, let's, let everybody have a chance to go through each one of those, and I understand what, what we're doing, but.
I do too.
I don't know, Jay, you alright?
Yeah, I guess.
Hmm?
Also, we have a lot of choice.
Say your piece.
That's good. I, I, I mean, we still haven't addressed this part yet, right?
That's correct, that's not before you, at the moment.
Alright, we had a motion, I made the motion, Bob seconded. All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion passes for P.
Y'all wanna consider the driveway?
Yeah, might as well.
Right.
Love being working loose.
What's your pleasure, Mr. Bishop?
I vote to the night, move on, it's our driveway, same reason, I wouldn't vote against the last one. You know, it's gonna be up to me, us to maintain it after they go on anyway.
Spend, you spend, you spend 20, is what they're asking for, right, Carl?
Not to exceed 20,000.
Not to exceed, you either spend, not to exceed 20 today, or you wait two or three years, and spend, agree not to spend 50 to fix it. You know, but.
Mr. President, may I request either Mr. Bishop or Mr. Mar, any of you guys, to, to move to add this item to the agenda for discussion purposes and potential action, please.
I make that motion, we add it.
Bob make the motion. Well, we, we gotta have it on there to discuss it, so I will second that motion.
Well, Bob, if we don't add it, we can't vote on it.
Hence why I suggested we get it on there.
I'm ignorant of the, of these facts, I will admit that.
Alright, Bob made motion, I second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Alright, we.
Nay.
It's added to the agenda, now we can discuss it.
Who were the three that voted for the two, was it me, you, and Steve? Did we vote for the, the 250 originally, and Daniel and, uh, Jay voted against it?
I, I think that's correct. I mean, if this, if this is gonna be split, I really would rather, uh, Daniel have a seat.
I mean, the question is though, Steve, you, you, I was pulling the board real quick, you know, I don't like it, but I don't, I think it's gonna cost us. I'm, I agree with, with Jay, you know, we're also gonna be paying for the repair, if there's a repair, and it's gonna be about two or three times the cost to repair it than it would be if you, you don't go ahead and address it now potentially.
So.
I think you pay Piper today, or whatever acronym is, or whatever, or you gonna pay it later, uh.
I, I agree that, uh, we're too close to the end, and, I mean, we have been bent over on this building, uh, from the start, but we are close to the end, and we have, we're gonna have the nicest courthouse county-owned in Mississippi. For $20,000 or less, uh, I, I think we ought to go ahead and, uh, put this thing together and get a bow on it, and get, get finished with it and move in, and, uh. This is not like, I mean, this isn't like digging 12-foot and hauling for 42 days or whatever it was.
Just 10.
Do what?
Just 10 days.
Well, it would have been, and, and I'm not trying to advise y'all one way or the other, I'm just trying to give y'all the facts, but if it, if it'd been, if the soleborns, and they did 26 of these, would have uncovered this in the beginning, it just so happened that this wasn't one of the borns that hid it. It would have been added to the contract originally, uh, but I understand where y'all are coming from. There is, it's only one year warranty, uh, for something like this, so in, within the first year, problems develop as the contract, if you are correct. You know, if something develops.
It is gonna happen in the first year.
What, what is, this is gonna be concrete?
No, asphalt.
Asphalt.
And.
How many inches of asphalt is it?
Uh, it's got a sub base, it's probably gonna be close to seven or eight, it's probably got two inches of finished base and five to six.
Five, okay.
Sub base, I would think, and then it's got.
Mr. President, I make a motion, we approve the $20,000 for the excavation.
And remove all the city's.
And what now?
And remove the city's water line.
At the same time, that, I'm tired of, you know.
We're gonna do the water line?
I would.
Go ahead and take it, ah, by all means, go ahead and take it, I'm tired of waiting on them on that.
That way, uh, we don't have to go back and reissue another change order.
So, they're gonna remove it at the same?
They're gonna start charging him $1,000 a day.
Well, we can't remove it until they have rerouted.
That's the holdup, they're holding us up, they're gonna reroute it.
Tell, tell the mayor we'll deduct $1,000 a day from his North Street overlay project until he gets his water line repaired.
That is correct, they cannot remove that water line, and they weren't gonna charge to remove the water line, but they can't remove it until the city re-routes existing.
Well, then how long that's gonna take?
Well, it's dependent on the city, he's already, you know, they've already been down a week.
Alright, well, what are we gonna do there?
I say let's withhold the $150,000 check on Lucky Road until, you know, the, uh.
Has it been made out?
It's gone. It's been mailed.
Delivered, tendered.
Well, we got no leverage there, do we?
In fact, this probably already the bank.
Well, we do need something to help that happen, I mean, that could just draw on.
Oh, no, they gonna come back and ask for some more days, because.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. Well, I, I don't know, I'm gonna.
So, what, what you will be considering now with Bob's motion, if I may, Mr. President, is an additional change order, which will be change order number eight, to allow for the expenditure of not to exceed 20,000, is that what we're gonna say on that? Not to exceed $20,000 for this additional excavation that's already been described to you. Um, and so, uh, what you would be doing, Bob, is approving that contention upon the receipt of change order number eight that comports with what you've been told by the architect.
So, we can't do this digging until they move the water line?
They can do some, they can do some of the digging, but they can't do it all.
Well, then that, we're held hostage then, and they could draw more and more days, because, and, and it won't be any of our control because the city's not doing their part.
Well, that, that, that is, that's.
Now, I know that, but I'm saying even on this right here.
I mean, but that's already happened, you read all these water breaks they had, and had waited a week for it to dry out.
Let me ask, let me ask a quick question, make sure you understand credit before I send this text. We are waiting on the city of Brandon to relocate this, this water line.
They are in the process of doing it now, but they couldn't get, but the previous weeks, the city couldn't get out there 'cause it was raining every day, so that's.
But they are in the process of relocating.
That's my understanding.
They're all working on it.
That's, that's right.
That's thousand.
That's your understanding.
That's my understanding, yes.
Working in planning or working in?
No, they're, they're actually rerouting, according to the contractor, he told me, they're in the process, the city's in the process of rerouting it right now, but they lost a week or 10 days.
I'll ask for a status, that won't be, that won't be mean.
Really, they're gonna reroute the water line, whether we dig or not.
Right.
And we're gonna have to wait on them to put our drive in until they get their water line rerouted.
But if they take another week, we can't do our digging.
I know, I mean, I understand.
They have, they have to reroute the line before they can abandon existing one, you know.
So, that, that part has gotta happen either way.
Right, exactly, it's got to, I mean, it's just, it's, I, it's never, I, I don't even know that the city knew it was there. I don't think anybody knew it was there, and why that's the case, I, I don't know.
I feel like if, only our building, our maintenance building, or if we, if we run into this matter, to ask about, I think that we would agree, let's dig it out, I mean, seven, this is not 12-foot, and it's not as, this is less than 20,000, where we were looking at 10 times that, I think we would all agree, if we were doing it over here at our building, we would say, yeah, go ahead, while we're doing it, go ahead and fix it.
You, it's gotta be done.
So, and this is gonna be our building. Bob, did you have a motion?
I did, I make a motion to approve.
I second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
For the record, that will be change order number eight.
Not to exceed 20,000.
Yeah, well, I was waiting on the law.
Yeah, exactly, I, I got ahead of you.
He never called for anybody against.
Alright, any opposed?
Yeah, right.
Alright, motion passes.
So, for the record now, um, you, you've approved change order number eight, contingent upon the receipt of that particular change order. What we expect that change order to say is that it's not to exceed 20,000 for this extra digging out. What's not been presented, what you have not had a chance to consider, is any additional requests for an extension in the contract completion date. But you're being told that that's possible, if not likely, because of the delays caused by the city's water line.
Now, let's just say how that goes.
So, I just wanted to state that so that it's clear that, that we can anticipate some more discussion about that. Alright?
Yes.
Carl, I appreciate you, man.
Yeah, we do.
Well, I, I can continue to state that Danny gets here.
He, he should be here.
No, because we, we'll have to rehouse the whole blaster thing. We've approved it, he can look at the video.
Well, he's my supervisor, so.
He, uh, he should be walking in the door.
Maybe not, go out the back door then, uh, Carl, uh.
Six minutes ago, he said, I'll be there in five minutes, so.
We're gonna do additional business.
Okay, additional business, I'll take about, what, two seconds?
Yeah, I got something.
Then you're called, go, Paul, quickly, he's pulling in. Alright, come on up, Mr. Word, I'm sorry, that's my call to make.
Good morning.
Morning.
We are, uh, really on the finishing edges of this 911 upgrade. The, uh, as you well know, we told you about the, uh, extreme amount of expense that we are saving with Melissa being able to negotiate this. In the negotiations with this new upgrade, one of the things that we've got is text to 911, uh, something that Rankin County has never had before. Um, I will tell you this, to, to preclude this, Hines County and Madison County both are about to launch text to 911.
Yeah, I saw that on the news that night.
Absolutely, so, um, it is in our upgrade to do that, however, on the expenses, it is only at the Rankin County Sheriff's Department PSAP. What we're asking for is an additional, we're paying right now, our phone bill is $46,000 a month, is what we pay, uh, for our 911 phone bill. We can get text to 911 at every PSAP in the county, which is where I believe it should be, for an additional $500 a month, which will run us up to 46,621, and when I say that's important, to get it everywhere, the sheriff's people over here at the, uh, at this PSAP are answering 50% of the 911 calls. They answered 66,000 911 calls.
Thank you, sir.
Last year. The closest person to them, or entity to them, is Flowood Police Department. Flowood only had 20,000 911 calls last year. They're, they're answering over 50% of the 911 calls in Rankin County. And it's just, uh, in my opinion, it's not prudent to put every single text to 911 call on top of them, since they're already getting over 50% of the 911 calls we have anyway. So, what this is gonna do is just spread it around and, uh, put it at all of our PSAPs at a much, much cheaper rate if we do it today than if we were to do it, uh, in about three months from now. So, if you so choose to do that. And there's nothing to say that we have to turn on the text to 911, I think it's prudent that we do that. Totally up to you guys, so.
You wore that to a groundbreaking ceremony?
I know it's a little bit different, this is state government, not county government, it's a little bit different that way. If Mike Worrick can wear a Smedium in his boarding beads, I can wear one of these.
This is an extra large, sir, this is an extra large.
Hey, let's get it, I'll just embarrass him real quick. What you do on that, Bob, is you shift it off of you immediately, put it back on somebody else.
What is your recommendation, Mr. Word?
That, that we do this 0.01% per month increase to do the $500.
I second it, just by the way he looks today.
Sorry, we have a motion by Bob seconded, by Daniel, any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
We're looking at a cutover at the, uh, middle of June, is what we're looking at with AT&amp;T. We are, I'm working with, uh, our IT folks now to try and move all of our servers out of the EOC building, and actually put those in the shelter where they're supposed to be. Um, I've got with Marcus on that, and he's doing some checking, we're thinking it's one fiber run, all, it's all, condensate's already there. Um, we can move it over there and save $800 per hour, times about 80 hours. Won't cost us anything, other than the cost of the fiber to stick it in, we're talking a couple of hundred bucks. So, we'll see what happens on that, we're.
I'm not sure I wanna ask this, Mr. President, but since Mr. Word is up here, sirens towers throughout the county, what is the board's take on that? I've got two locations, probably more than that, down in District 3. I keep putting it off, and, you know, of course, I'm probably gonna totally put it off since they're not gonna run, but still, Mr. Word, and he's got budgeting coming up soon, what is the, the posture of the board far as weather sirens and, and that cost?
Are you thinking, talking about, wanna add some?
Yeah, there's some spots.
There's several, several throughout.
The last time we added some was because there was some grant monies available.
Right.
Other than that.
We don't, we didn't do anything on a budget.
No.
What are they, about 30,000 a pot?
Currently, they are about $33,000 each. I have looked, I've talked to some folks last week when I was on the coast about that, I think we can reduce that down to about $20,000, and I'll tell you real quickly why. The, these things are controlled off of what's called a Motorola Ace 3600. Those are going by the wayside, and they're, they've got new technology, if you will, that's gonna set those off. I've been speaking with Marcus about this, he's got some other solutions that we can use to actually activate the sirens, which will save us about $10,000 a piece. What I'm scared of is at some point in the very near future, I'm thinking three to five years out, Motorola's gonna come to us and say, hey, guys, just so you know, your stuff's not gonna work anymore, so here's, we can fix it for you, and for only $1.6 million, and you can have your sirens back working, that's what I'm scared of. They just came to me about two months ago with a new software package, um, to run our sirens for $52,000. And I showed them the door, because I, I don't really care what my screen looks like, all I wanna do is push the button, activate the siren, I don't care what the color palette looks like, it doesn't matter to me, it's not worth $50,000 to me to have pretty colors on a computer screen. So, that's, I know for a fact that's coming, I know it is, uh, so.
My, my take on the sirens, in the most rural areas are where you need them. Uh, they're to alert people that are outside the house.
Yes.
Farming, or whatever else. When we get in the urban areas, a cell phone starts going off when those sirens, sirens go off. I, also, you're in a house with the air conditioning running, you're probably not gonna hear it anywhere.
You're not, right.
Uh, I think in the most rural areas, I would like to continue, uh, I don't, I mean, I, I don't wanna go run out there and take them all down, except those in Jay's district, but, uh, that, that was a joke, that, that was a joke. But, uh, at the same time, I mean, uh, if you think about it, in these rural areas, y'all, you know.
Well, I don't have cell phones out there.
Well, sometimes cell phones don't work all over.
I'm just curious, you talking about urban area?
Yeah, I can, I will tell you this, the, uh, the people in Puckett, Mississippi, were, were very glad that there were sirens going on, on the, on the last tornadoes that we came through. As a matter of fact, I, I was told there was, they couldn't hear anything but church bells ringing and sirens going off. That, as we.
There's a lot of places still in our county that cell phones do not reach. And then when you have a storm, and they had two tornadoes that came through from Puckett up, uh, through Antioch, you can lose a lot of that cell that you may have had. So, the second one comes through, and you don't get any warning, uh, on your cell. But, uh, also, those, these people are the same people that says, "I don't have a smartphone, I don't want a smartphone." You know, maybe a flip or something like that, uh-
And at nighttime too, it's very helpful, because you know-
I wonder if sometime ago, there was an option to where you could put in these weather radios?
There, I understand that there was, and I know that there's not now, 'cause I've, I have done some checking on that to see, and there's no hazard mitigation grants out now for weather sirens or weather radios, which the radios is the way to go. I mean, you, you think about it, if we, let's say we bought two sirens, that's $66,000. I could probably buy two tractor trailer loads of weather radios for $66,000. The problem is, like everything with county government, we cannot expend county funds to a private citizen. We can't, we use grant money, but there's none available.
The other problem is you can't, I'm not gonna say you can't, but putting one of those weather radios in a chicken house when you're out there working, doing whatever-
You gotta be within the, within the range, absolutely.
Well, I mean, you're not gonna hear the-
Right, unless you're in the room with it, absolutely, uh, so. And some of those sirens have a, uh, you know, they're, they're a mile, mile and a half radius. Depending on topography, obviously, you can get places that you get a lot further than that. Um, it's just, that's what they advertise as the effective ring, is, uh-
But if we pick sites, don't they have to approve them, or is that only if we had the grant?
No, that's only with a grant.
Well, with the grant, they must have, 'cause they did it, when we did it, they approved where we put them.
The Rankin County Board of Supervisors approves where y'all want them at today.
They just showed us, uh, affected area, where, how many people are affected.
No, they, they came back and kinda said where they wanted them, uh, because of that, but I think that you're right.
May, again, with a grant, but if, if we're buying them, it's 100, 100% up to you five, wherever y'all say put them at, that's where they go.
Yeah.
Um, now, what we do is, we do get with Lance Cooper, and Lance gets some maps, gets some address points, so we, it makes a huge difference if we move a quarter mile down the road here, or this topography, we can get more out of it, or cover more house stops. So, Lance has been very, very instrumental in making maps for us, absolutely.
Well, this was just really for information.
Yeah, I just wanna bring it up, 'cause he's got budgeting coming, I've got two or three locations down there, they wanted it in my area.
Well, if you really want it, we're about to do a bond, so if you want it, speak up.
Did that cover that too?
I don't think it-
I was fixing to say that.
Oh, we finally got a no?
Got, got a no on public safety.
Alright, Louis, hey, speaking, hey, speaking of money and budgets coming up, hey, look, speaking of money and budget coming up, this is a crazy question even asked, but tell me about the roof at EOC, has it been fixed yet?
We're working on it.
No, it's not been fixed yet, but I can tell you that yesterday, there was two guys that came to the office, and, uh, one of the latter, they got up on the roof, um, I got ahold of Johnny, Johnny, he got there, and, uh, I'd already carried him around the inside, chilled him on top of the roof, and Johnny and these two guys, whomever they were, uh, I, I'm assuming they were architects, I'm not sure, um-
I talked to Carl-
The last I heard-
He's not here now, they got a couple of ideas, because it's, uh, it's different type of roofs on it, they got some-
Right, yesterday, the outcome, yesterday, what Johnny told me, was they are going to replace the two troughs, rebuild them, 'cause one of them's rotted out, they're gonna rubber line them, and raise them a paraffit up eight inches to cap a wall. And put new standing seam all the way around them.
Alright, let me follow up on that. One area more important than EOC is Janice's desk. So, my next question was, on the same roofing concerns, is the leak stopped on your area, do we know?
On what now, where?
Janice's desk, where we have more important things than the President of the United States' desk, but, so, we do gotta PO for Janice's? So, they're coming to get Janice's straight there?
On the building, over there, in the conference room, meeting room, there's a, there's bathrooms on the other end. And I don't typically go in the ladies' bathrooms, but I've been told, so I did.
It's, it's pretty bad.
And it's in bad, bad shape.
Yes.
And I don't know, that's not your responsibility, but whoever is supposed to look at that and take care of that, the maintenance, that bathroom needs to be fixed when this ceiling or roof-
Doug and I were speaking of that yesterday, um, and I actually carried the guys in there, the roofing guys, to show them, that this is obviously water damage coming from some, wherever it's coming from, it's coming from.
Right.
Um, and obviously, Doug was concerned about that too, as, I mean, there's several things down there that need to be, uh, addressed. The, all the, all the people that come in there, I mean, there's a lot of people that go into that building on a daily basis, a lot of folks. I mean, it is the eye of Rankin County, a lot of people going there.
We're gonna have over a hundred people in there tomorrow night for Forest Street meeting.
Yes.
Half of them will be ladies, and I'm telling you, it's nasty.
And also, what you can't do is warm anything up on the, on the stove tops.
Right.
Um, so, I, I don't, I don't know what the story is on that, I'm not gonna, that's, that's not my purview, but, uh, I can, I can tell you-
They said there's a bond.
We need to fix it.
I heard, it's coming around.
I can fix the stove top, but-
A lot of crazy rumors on some of them.
Maybe just our discussion will get things generated, if not, we'll have, maybe dress it a different way. But I, I don't, I don't wanna go in there and spend a lot of money on doing the ladies' restroom if we don't fix the roof, because it's flooding down the wall.
I concur, I concur, so.
And the closest one to my heart's Janice's roof.
I agree.
She's, she's learned to adapt, she's learned to adapt, she can-
What else, Mr. Word?
Hey, man, she did, she had, I was standing on her desk-
She can go move all her stuff out of the way.
I don't think we'll do that.
I took out seven, I took out seven seal tiles the other day on her desk, trying to find a leak, and I can't find it, which, I'm not the guy you want. So, you had Mike up there with the tiles, we couldn't find it, so, they got that flex seal, you know, I think I'll fix and go with, and Janice said, "Oh."
I assume you have nothing else, Mike Word?
Mike Word closes.
You're done?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. No, no.
I'm playing west, I can give you some.
No, no, we're just getting past your section here.
Sir, Mr. President, with your indulgence, we, uh, have items M and N under my section that have not, uh, been acted upon yet, and so I'd like to put that in front of the board.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Cross.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No problem. Uh, item M would be a resolution declaring the intention of the board, uh, to either issue general obligation bonds of the county, issue a general obligation bond of the county for sale to the Mississippi Development Bank, or enter into a loan with the Mississippi Development Bank, all in an aggregate principal amount, not to exceed 30 million dollars, to raise money for. And you see those items A, B, and C, that are authorized under the bond statute.
Can you hang on before you get into all that, when we-
I'm not gonna read it, yes, sir, I, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read it.
Okay.
You, you see what the authorization would be for in items A, B, and C under, under item M of the agenda?
Yeah.
I, I have a good question about the, the face amount, and, and this is really more to Lynn's question, or to Lynn. Yeah, we're looking at 30 million, we've got, uh, whatever the debt, so I don't wanna get into the minute details, whatever debt service has been dedicated, leaving a mill over from Roden Bridge, and that's going to service that debt for the next 15 years.
Right.
If we go down to a 25, or a 20, or I'll say 18, 18 seems to be a, a number everybody's gotten hung up on. If you do an 18 million dollar thing, can we, are we able to reduce the debt mileage to, to reflect that 18? Or are we still paying the 18 and just paying it off sooner?
Paying it off sooner, that you really need the one mill for the two years, for the long term, for, for it, just because of the short-term impact, it's not going to materially impact that. That was some of the six scenarios that I have worked through, trying to get a reduction that made sense. It wouldn't make sense because, yeah, you could do it, but you would be temporarily having to take money out of your, some cash that you have on hand to meet the payments in the interim. It would balance out at the end of the year, but it, you, you, it created cash flow issues in the months during the, uh, from October 1st to 9/30.
Bob had asked a question, I, I didn't see the answer to it. What is the most amount of money that we could get to, to support a nine-year payout?
Uh, on, uh, I, I, I've got a scenario here that, that shows that, on a, I believe it's eight years, if you wanna look at that.
Yeah, sure.
While you're looking for that, I, maybe just 'cause I don't, I'm not very smart on this, if we were to go in here and ask for the 30 million, but say we're not, we don't use it, we're only gonna use, we only end up using 20 million. Well, our administrative cost for y'all and further down the line, and Craig, gonna be based on 30 million? Or if we said, "No, right now, we're gonna say 20?"
It's based on the issuance of state, it's, so if it's 20, the, the amount of the issuance cost is on 20.
When you say the issuance, we're, we're saying the issuance of 30, but we may not use, but 20?
No, issuance, whatever that dollar amount, we agree to.
Correct, we're saying you intend-
The intent is 30, but we only issue 20.
Up to and not to exceed, so, th- this is nothing but an intent.
So, you're gonna, it would, you would charge us the same amount of money?
Thank you.
And everybody else, if we issued 30, but only used 20, is it, in the same other, if we issued, I mean, we put the intent on 20, and, and used 20?
Well, no, the, the amount of bonds you issue determine the issuance cost. And it's pretty much on a percentage basi, it is on a percentage basis. Now, the only additional cost in the, above that, is you would have, on a market deal, you rate those bonds, so you'd have another 25, 20 to 25,000 dollars worth of cost associated with that bond issue. But, uh, for rating purposes only, it's, the other cost is percentage, it's, uh-
And just, and just for clarification, when I asked that question, the eight to nine, Daniel had mentioned overlay projects, you know, overlay money, and I'm not really enthusiastic about going out to 15 years on overlay money. It's in like eight to nine, is something that Harrison has said, that's a doable number, you can loan money on for eight to nine-year projects. So, if you're going to do an overlay money fund, and I'll wait till Lynn finishes telling his story, that's just, that was the reason I, I, I posed the question about eight to nine-year bond money, because if we have overlay money in there-
Because I think that overlay stuff dies out in the 10-year road warranty. Yeah, so you don't wanna be paying for road, that's right, I'm 100% where you're late in that year process.
So, that's the only reason, that's all, yeah, go ahead.
Well, what you're looking at there is two series of bonds under, uh, issue, uh, under the same offering document. You're not required to do that, but if you'd save money, if you got a amortization schedule for the overlay for eight, nine years, depending on, on the amount of money you needed there. I think that shows 8.2 million dollars on an eight-year amortization schedule, along with the longer projects, is a Series A, the overlay's a Series B. So, those are just numbers to give you a indication of what you could do. You could issue, you could do more, certainly on nine years, you could add another $2 million on, 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 on a nine-year, and reduce the other side of it, and still stay within your revenue stream. And, and it would be good to really think through, on the, on the overlay side, because of the way you want to amortize it, to, because you're gonna be paying those, that series of bonds off first before the next series come on. I, I think it'd be more efficient and probably beneficial in the market to structure that, that way, so. And the amounts, just, you know.
Yeah, he, Lynn and I spoke briefly, I think he's using eight billion, I had, came up with seven, you know, 'cause I really wasn't sure, Daniel had thought about five billion, I know we're not doing some North Street stuff, some other things, overlay. So, I mean, that number is fluid, I think, right, Lynn?
It is fluid, it's very fluid, so.
I still don't see the answer, uh, for us low folks, how about showing me where, where it says our max amount we can give for eight or nine years?
Uh, on, uh, this sheet right here.
Yep.
It's like 20 million.
Designated this series of bonds, big bonds, as overlay bonds.
Didn't mention on my dog.
Yeah, that's the eight, 8.2, is that right?
But that's figuring on 20 million, uh, total.
We get that far in the discussion?
That we, we could, I know we could go up, well, I say I'd- Oh, you're using the 20 plus the eight? I got you, I got you, but that was, that's what this is. But this is on a nine-year, can, this side is, this side is not. Right, I see, I see, and then this one over here? That's taking the overlay out, okay, yeah, well, shorter, shorter, we're just having a shorter term on the overlay.